So we are officially starting. Welcome, everyone. I want to introduce Jacqueline Rhodes to kick this off on our subject. We are talking about all things water treatment.
Thank you so much for the time this evening that we can spend in this study session. I know we have a lot to cover. And the goal is to really revisit some of our master plan findings and the work that we've advanced today. And talk through what information you might need for your decision making for financial strategies ahead. And some of the information we'll share today builds on what we heard from you through last year's rate and fee setting process. But we really want to dig into the specifics around the water treatment plant replacement project. And hear from you if there's any other questions we can answer for some of the items that are not only on tonight's agenda for immediate action, but then long term next steps as we continue to implement. So our topics. So how are we going to do this? We're going to actually zoom way out because I want to refresh you on how we got to where we are today, starting with a little bit of background and history. The why, some of the foundational assumptions that we've built into the master planning work we've been doing. And think through some of the alternatives so that you are armed with all the information you need on how we got to the project recommendations for replacing the treatment plant. Then we're going to go through and zoom detail down into this project, the timeline, and the immediate requirements today and some next steps for what's needed to complete the work. So I wanted to start back with some history. As I mentioned, we're really focused on the water treatment, master plan findings and the replacement of our Arvada water treatment. How did we get there? Well, everything we've done leading up to the 2020 treatment master plan was really about securing our water supply. Our predecessors' vision really looked to put us in an enviable position when it comes to Arvada's water supply that we have, or a partner with Denver Water on the gross project to secure our water supply through Build Out. But if you zoom way back, as we think about our water supply in the 50s, as we first started transitioning to surface water, a lot of the foundational assumptions that put us in this position relate to the work we did in the 60s with our 1965 water contract. What we show here is 19,000 acre feet up with the ACFT stand for with Denver Water. So with the Moffett Tunnel work and the construction of the Ralston Water Treatment Plant really set us up for those big investments in our water system to be able to support the growth. It was a crash plant. Fast forward to the 70s and 80s, and again, that visionary work to construct the Arvada flood reservoir for Arthur Creek and other water supply rights and the Arvada Water Treatment Plant, which helps us with some of the seasonal demands on our system. It's used more seasonally for our PP, whereas the Ralston Treatment Plant undergone major upgrades throughout the 60s, 70s, and 90s to make it current. Also has been enhanced over the years. So as I mentioned, the Ralston Plant pre-treatment, there's been major upgrades to the treatment facilities over the years to ensure that we're in compliance with developing regulations. So that's some of the history. And what I wanted to put out there for our thinking is, what's this vision that we're setting for the next generation? We're at that stage of major investment like we've done in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. And how do we want to set up the future of our community for this next level of this 50 to 70 year investment in our treatment facilities? I'm going to turn it over to Mary Stahl, our engineering manager. And actually, could I just pause? I should have done this at the beginning. I'd like to acknowledge all the team members here who supported this work, who may be called upon to answer some other questions you have. I should have led with that. But do you mind if we do a quick round of some of our members that are here today?
I think that sounds great. So Mary Stahl, Utilities Engineering Manager.
I'm one of the treatment managers.
Jessica Maas, I'm one of our colleagues.
Jamie Wolf, I'm one of our utilities engineers.
I'm Bethany Cole, I'm also utility engineer.
Christine Gray, Utilities Business Manager.
Heidi Garson, Communications for Infrastructure.
Thank you. And sorry, I should have left without. We have such an excellent team supporting the work that we're doing today. So I should have.
It's actually tomorrow and Thursday that you're going to be really off. All right. So first of all, let me say, we promised the leadership team that we would, we would roll through this. You all know that I can talk about this all day long. So I am going to try really hard to blow through. So tried to set this up. The storytelling thing I learned in elementary school was who, what, why, when, and how, right? And where? So we're trying to hit all that, skipping over the who's because the who's are in this room. So we're going to start with our why, our level of service and our current status. And our why really comes down to a document we call Level of Service. And that Level of Service document is what the utilities team, and not just water treatment, the entire utilities team, uses to translate mission, vision, values, strategic plan into actionable goals that we all agree on and that we can all move forward on and act on and give to our consultants to design around. Which is really what we use on an everyday basis and to make sure we're all talking in the same language within, from the operator one all the way up through engineering and into Jacqueline. We do update this document every two years. First time we did it was in 2021 and we're going to update it again this summer. We do have 12 areas, of which water treatment is one of them. And a lot of little words. The idea is not to read the little words, but to focus on the big words, which we've got all the little words from down there. We are focused on the customer. We're using data. We're using it to culture safety for both the public and our staff and resilience. That's really the foundation of all those little words. And in treatment, we actually drilled one more layer. We took the safe drinking water contaminant list and we set out our level of service for each one of those contaminants under varying raw water quality conditions. The upshot is our goal is making safe water, making good tasting water. We do. We won in 2023 in the regional competition for under quarter million people. And we make enough water. And that includes for firefighting. That last little bullet point is around firefighting. But that's really the big picture. Safe, good, and enough. So how? The how is through our two treatment plants, which Jacqueline mentioned. We have the Ralston Water Treatment Plant. The primary source for that plant is the 1965 contract from Denver Water. It is 36 million gallons per day. It was constructed in 1962 with various improvements dating through 2000. And then the major repair project we're doing right now. It is a year round plant. It is designed to be year round, operates well year round, and it serves 100% of the city. The Arvada plant, the source of it is the Arvada reservoir. In fact, it was constructed concurrently with the. Its secondary source is that Frazier contract that happened in the 90s, 90s that Jacqueline mentioned. It is 16 million gallons per day permitted. We struggled to get that much out of it. I'll get to that in a minute. It dates from 1984. It is a seasonal plant and it only reliably serves about one half of the city. So are we meeting our level of service? It's a yes, but? This is the report card we gave ourselves. So safe water. I want to start with every drop that's gone out the door has been safe to drink. However, we have four violations in 2024 from two incidents that are directly related to how the Arvada plant is designed. So we gave ourselves a B on that. The Arvada plant is not designed to current standards. That's starting to show up as the state is really starting to go, hey, we want everything to match today's standards. Good water. We do make good tasting water and the operations team is, Chris team is amazing. Both plants struggle every single year under certain conditions, but because we have an amazing team, our customers don't know that we've been struggling. Both plants do struggle every year under certain conditions. And if we get really challenging water from a flood or from a fire, we're probably not going to handle it. It'll be safe, just won't be good water. Do we have enough water? And this includes resilience. We gave ourselves a C minus on this. And that has to do with the Arvada plant was never designed to run in the winter. We do run it in the winter. It's hard. It's not necessarily safe. It is just really hard. It does not reliably serve half the city, pretty much everything west of Indiana. And both plants, but in particular, because the Ralston is our workhorse every day of the year plant, they both have multiple single points of failure, which makes all of us really nervous. So that's where the C minus comes from. Digging into this a little bit more on that C minus, it also has to do with capacity. So our summer maximum day last year was around 40 million gallons per day. Ralston's 36, so we need two plants to meet that. So and we'll need to plans continuing into the future. We did a demand study in 2022 and we took a big wide range look and we came up with a range of demands. They all land higher than 40 at what we're calling Build Out, which is about 30 years, an assumption all parcels are built. And again, neither plant is fully reliable. So if one goes down, we're not meeting that peak day. Okay, that's July, August. What about the rest of the year, right? And we're not needing as much water? We'll still need more than what Arvada can put out in those shoulder months of May, June, and September, October. Arvada can't quite get there. And that's at its rated capacity of 16. It can't put that out in 24 hours because we have to take a filter out of service to clean it. So then it's 14. And then the pump station that Bethany is going to talk about can only put out 12 million gallons per day. So it just, there's just not the capacity there. And again, that either plant is fully reliable. So if one goes down or if one needs to be taken down to do work, which we've had to do with the Ralston project, staff has worked really, really hard and our contractor worked with us to really shorten those days up so we could live off storage from the slowest days of the year for just a couple of days so that we could take it down and rely on Arvada, even though we can't fully rely on Arvada. Continuing on that C minus, it came out of the master plan as well. These are the master plan results. The Ralston Plant has a really solid design behind it. Is it current, is it fully to current standards? Maybe, maybe not, but it's got a solid design. It has components that have additional life. The pre-treatment building was built in 2000. It should have another solid 15, 20 years out of it, probably 25. And it can be repaired to get us to 2045. Master plan was not so complimentary to the Arvada plant. Fully designed, it's a really poor shape and that capacity should simply be replaced. That's what the master plan said. So we took the master plan, worked to heart, and we did some stuff. You guys have heard me talk about the Ralston Plant quite a bit. And we're so excited. We are this close, this close. It should be finished next month. We did increase the capacity of each filter so that we can take a filter out of service to clean it and still hit that rated capacity from the state. We repaired the bottoms. We repaired concrete boxes. So this picture up on the left, that happened in July of 2022, one of the hottest days of the year. And one of our single points of failure has a bust through on a concrete wall. That was a little scary and terrifying for everybody. We had to take the plant down on the hottest day of the year that year. And we fixed it. It was, it was planned to be fixed that winter. It just happened a little bit sooner.
Is that water and filter media? What is that?
No, that's across concrete. It's across.
So it's just wet.
It's water and weeds.
Water and weeds. Okay.
Yeah. We did replace all the media and we did do quite a bit of work on concrete. And this is, you've seen these pictures before of old filter bottom, new filter bottom, when I was doing the bond up phase. We also did a solids project. A plant is only as good as it can get rid of what it pulls out of the water, meaning the solids. And that was completed last year. We have, by all accounts, is working much, much better than it is today. So what did we do on the Arvada plant out of the master plan? Well, we took to heart what was said in the master plan. And I say we began a siding study. There was more to it than that. And I'm going to get into that in a few slides. But we kind of revisited everything the first consultant did to be sure that we were on the right path. We updated our demand projections. We're on this path of building more capacity. Let's make sure we're building the right amount and not overbuilding. We did public engagement in 2023. And then in 2024, and this is why Danny is here, is we did a pilot plant. Danny ran it in 2024. Pilot plant is just a mini treatment plant. So we can test out lots of different ideas. I'm going to talk more about that later, too. So that's where we came from in our why. We have a plant that our consultant said you should replace. It's not in great shape. Our level of service is not being met and that's just going to go downhill from here if we don't do anything about Arvada. So how are we going to do that? What are we going to do about? Jacqueline indicated big picture, small picture. This is where we're going way big picture again. Big picture, replace the Arvada capacity. That is our current path. But what are alternatives to that? Engineers say there is always the do nothing or defer, do it later. Bethany's going to get into why we don't think that's a very good idea. Can we really not repair this plant? Come on. It's only 40 years old. Bethany's going to get into that as well. Brand new plant right up the road, right? We've all talked about it. There's a brand new plant right up the road. We don't think that's a great idea either, and I'm going to get into those details. So Bethany is going to get to talk to us about Arvada.
So as Mary said, we always want to start with the do nothing. Like what if we do nothing or start this project later? However, there are risks with this option, like permanent outdoor use restrictions for watering our lawns and trees, risking no water production and risking quality of our water that we're producing. So as Mary said earlier in the presentation, the city needs two plants to meet demand and to provide resiliency. Based on industry standards and multiple evaluations and staff feedback, the Arvada Treatment Plant will only last another five years before failing. That is an estimate. But that is based on a lot of information. After the Arvada Treatment Plant fails, we cannot produce enough water to meet demand during the summer. I'm going back to what Mary said. We're capped at 36 million gallons per day out of the Ralston Plant. Once the Arvada Plant fails, the Ralston Treatment Plant can't be taken offline for repairs for more than a couple of hours. That's again, due to the limitations that we have of pumping from the Arvada Plant up into the other systems. But if that plant's gone, we don't have any way to take that plant offline to do repairs. And then we are also relying exclusively on a plant that there's portions of it, especially the intake that are 60 years old, that if that fails, the whole plant goes down. So it's very risky. We also will not be able to treat taste and odor effectively. And if there's a catastrophic event such as fire, floods, we're going to really have a tough time meeting the demands in the system and having to probably shut down some of the treatment plant. So I wanted to give you a couple of glimpses of the condition of the Arvada Plant to give context to what we're talking about. So I'm going to try to point out all of these, what each of these pictures represents. But in general, they represent a lot of different issues that our operations team has to struggle through. So we have a facility that is not up to code. And the example of this is this here, that's the electrical equipment. You need three feet in front of that to maintain it safely. And we have very hard or impossible to replace equipment because the companies that manufacture equipment are no longer in business or there's no space to even put in new equipment. The examples of that are, this is the picture of the clarifiers, which removes all the solids out and the flaculators that helps to make the solids clump together so it can't fall out. As well as these valves here, there's the chemical systems and some of our electrical equipment. There are safety hazards. I already mentioned one with the electrical equipment not having enough space in front of it for our, our staff to operate it. And in the winter, there's some areas that are really steep. So if it gets icy, it's a slip and fall hazard. This is kind of hard to see, but that's a 20% slope going down to a facility that our operators have to go to to check on while that plant's online. I'm going to wait to just play this for a second because it's, it's a little extreme. But this is a video taken by staff of the Finnish Water Pump Station that we've been talking a little bit about at the Arvada Plant. So this pump station delivers water north of Adia and west of Carr Street. So it's a good portion of our, of our city as a whole. For context, this pump station was installed quickly during a drought with money from Denver Water. Operations staff was not consulted on the design. The building around the pumps is too small. It does not meet current safety standards or hydraulic standards, making failures more frequent and extreme. So this is what a video security camera captured. So this is an operator taking a video of the security camera. So this pump station is lit on fire twice. Once our staff was in the building, once this time they were not, thankfully. So while operations staff does their best to maintain the Arvada Plant, they are limited by an old facility with areas that were rushed when built, do not meet regulations and do not meet current best practices for safe operations. We don't need to see it again. There we go. So overall, the option of doing nothing or waiting to do the work is risky to residents, businesses, and city staff. I didn't mention this earlier, but in general, it takes, like, we're in the middle of this water treatment plant work and it's going to take us till 2030 to get this work completed. So that five years is right on the edge. So if we wait, there's a real risk of not producing water. So the next alternative I wanted to discuss is large scale repair. And I just want to note that our operations staff is amazing. They do such a good job trying to maintain this facility, but they are really working on an uphill battle here. They have a lot of constraints that they have to work through. And that we've been looking at this option of repairing this facility for years. And unfortunately, this isn't a feasible option for a lot of the reasons that we've already discussed. So the pre-treatment. So basically, I'm sorry, I'm going to step back just a second. We can't just repair it because it doesn't meet regulations. So we can't put in equipment because it's not meeting what, what we need to do to be in compliance with CDPHG and federal regulations. So the pre-treatments, which is the flaculation and sedimentation, that equipment's no longer manufactured. So we can't even get it. The majority of the facility does not meet regulation requirements and would therefore require wholesale replacement. Additionally, we need to expand and add several processes, including residuals whirling to prevent odor issues and keep up with solids production, just as Mary said, that we have to have a place to put the solids that are moving out of the water or else we can't produce water. We have to add carbon dioxide in lime to be compliant with the lead and copper rule. And that is the federal regulation for corrosion control. We have to add space for disinfection to meet regulatory requirements. That would get rid of all the tier three violations that we've been having. And expand capacity, as Mary described earlier, to meet demand.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So does the older plant that's older than this plant by 22 years have all that? It has the carbon in lime. It has the disinfection. It has all the flaculation. It's just this plant was built without those things?
That's correct.
Okay.
We are repairing the lime and carbon dioxide system right now to be in compliance, but those systems are there. They just need to be repaired.
Okay. And this one's just doesn't.
It doesn't have it.
I really would encourage council members to go out and take a look at this because I've never seen a water treatment plant like this. You wouldn't want, and staff is amazing. I don't want you to be offended by this, but you wouldn't want your lunch cook there. It's, it's falling apart. It literally, the paint is falling off, the wood is falling off, concrete's falling off. I've never seen a water treatment plant like this and it's 40 years old.
I was just wondering because it was built 20, it's 20 years newer plant. And yet it is like.
Yeah. Older plants are such workforces. They're amazing.
It also was expanded multiple times. So the oldest portion is 60 years old. But it was expanded in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. And so a lot of it is newer, just fundamentally the bones. But we've also done a lot of work that replaced the electrical equipment, the, the mechanical equipment. So prior to this work.
Majority, 96, we added post lime and CO2. In 2000, we added the pre-treatment, flaculation, clarification to that plant. So granted, the main plant is pretty old, but most of the processes we're talking about here are much newer.
And that work in the 90s responded to the Safe Drinking Water Act amendments of 1989. No work was done on Arvada to respond to that.
Okay, right. We can't talk to why previous decision makers decided to put in a plant like this, but you're right. I've never seen anything like this.
Well, I mean, it makes sense. It seems like the older plant had the space in the room to implement the new stuff to adapt. So it wasn't like in 62, they were like, oh, we're putting in this thing. It hasn't been there. It's been added on as regulations. So that's why the older plant has newer systems, but this plant doesn't.
It has to do with that seasonality versus year round.
Right.
And space and.
Killer on water plants.
But I will get into a little bit more detail about probably why this wasn't expanded or changed. But it's coming in a few slides. And there's a little, little like note there that's saying, I don't even know if we could build here. So there's probably a reason why nobody ever.
And we'll get to that in a slide or two.
And we'll get to that in a second.
Festive that it's built at the bottom of a dam.
Yes. So this aerial shows the facility that need to be replaced to meet either compliance or to make it more operational. And so you can see that it's almost the entire facility. I didn't put a box over this one because that one was already hard to use. And so it's kind of secondary because it goes underneath the diversion canal for the dam. Overall, this site is really hard to use, hard to operate. So the preliminary costs for repairing, which would mean replacing the Arvada Plant at its current site is $346 million. But this is an optimistic cost. So this cost reflects the different site constraints as far as building on a small site with a, with a, with a treatment plant that is on there that you'd have to demolish at the same time while building. But this does not reflect the restrictions of building at this current site due to the dam location.
The dam location.
I should say location as, because it's close to the dam. So this is a preliminary layout of what we would need to build so that this plant was in compliance. And you can see that a lot of it is laid over the current Arvada Water Commitment Plant Site. We can probably scoot it over a little bit, but what I want to really show is that we only have about two acres to build. So this means that we're going to have to be demolishing the current treatment plant while we're building the replacement one. So that means we'll be on watering restrictions for about four years. We also don't have room for expansion in case, like Mary said, that there's like a cone that we're trying to hit with the demand going into the future. If we do need to expand this plant, we can't because there's just not enough space on this, on this site. And we definitely can't replace it at this site in 57 years when this treatment plant is aged past use. But most importantly, we don't even know if we can build on the site because it's at the toe of a dam. Going back to the history, just as a quick refresher, they built the dam and this treatment plant at the same time. So the dam wasn't full when they were building it. So the contractors are building it, didn't have to worry about the safety of being at the toe of a dam. So dams fail when there's deep excavation that dug right next to the toe, which is at the edge of this red line here. So if you think about, if you like dig at a riverbed or at like an ocean, water starts filling that hole. And that water preferentially goes to that hole because it's just less, water always go where there's less pressure. That means that that water is flowing faster through the, an area in the dam that would move the solids and the materials that were used to make that structurally sound, causing failure. It's called hydraulic fracturing. Because of that, state law requires us to have state, state engineer approval to build within 200 feet of the dam. But it's even risky going, building at 400 feet close to the toe of the dam. So here, you'll see the edge of the building's 95 feet. It doesn't include what's required for the excavation to build it. We'd probably be closer to like 85 feet-ish. And most of the facility would be within 200 feet and almost all of it is within 400 feet. So what I wanted to leave you guys with is that we can't fit into this space. Well, first of all, we can't just repair this facility. And that we can't repair and replace the facility at its current site. If we do, we are going to be choosing watering restrictions for at least four years. And replacement at this location or repair, like deep excavation at this location is likely not approved by the state engineer due to the risk of a dam failure. And that also means that it's going to be more costly. So we could add another at least 30% to that cost that I shared earlier due to all the safety concerns that we're going to have to implement to make sure that the people working in those holes are safe. And I didn't mention this earlier, but this site is at the, is that, it's in an area where if there's any flooding and the flooding overtops those dams, there's three of them that would flood this site. There's the Ralston Dam, the Arvada Dam, and then the Tucker Lake. So if there's ever a flood, this facility would be wiped out. And in 2013, we were actually on alert for watching for overtopping of those dams. Thank you. It's Mary's turning. Thank you. It's Mary's turning.
So continuing on the big picture alternatives, how about buying from Denver Water? Let's start with we lose control. The Denver Water Board is appointed by the Denver mayor. None of our residents or anyone in this room votes for the Denver mayor. I don't know if he cares what we think. Um, additionally, we lose control on development because now Denver Water gets to stick their nose in it because it's their water. Um, the costs are greater. We did a super, let me do this super back of envelope with some assumptions that I don't know that Denver Water would agree with. And we still and I tried to make it cheap. I like cut in half what they charge because we already have raw water with them and other things. And it's still more money on a thousand gallon basis than what we charge right now. And I didn't include the tap fee because I didn't want to get that far into it because I was already over current tap fees. Um, and then the big one is water quality is not compatible. I'm not saying Denver doesn't make good water. Denver makes great water. They actually won the category for over quarter million. They make rain washed. But they use a different disinfection regime and that different disinfection regime comes with different alkalinity and different pH. And when you mix the two waters, it's not great. You actually lose your disinfection and you can cause pipe scaling and you can cause things to happen in home plumbing. So if we were to choose to take the to buy from Denver Water, we'd either have to do additional processing or basically flush the entire system for for weeks and months and put up with a lot of complaints. We don't see this as feasible. There's a lot of other reasons as well, including the way Denver has designed their system. Um, because they use a whole system resilience, meaning if something's wrong with the north plant, they just turn it off. And they go use one of their other plants because they have four. Problem is they don't have any service north of I seventy and west of Wadsworth, except that north plant. So big picture, those are our big picture alternatives. Now we're going to go small picture on the alternatives for replacing the Arvada capacity. And that was that replacement siding study I mentioned. We asked this consultant to look at condition, that why statement again. Hey, you know, our first consultant said, you really should just walk away. Staff is going, you should walk away. Let's ask one more time. Let's be sure. Your answer was yes, please walk away. And yes, we think you have another twenty to twenty five years of Ralston. Um, because we asked him to look at both plans. We asked them to look at the what? Should we do one plant, two plants or three plants? And their answer was two plants. Three plants are more expensive to run. One plant is not in compliance with our nineteen sixty five Denver Water contract, which goes back to that history and our foundational water resources. What do we build? Eighteen MGV. That came from the demand study combined with the Ralston current capacity and and moving forward. What would our additional capacity be in the future if we decided to build more treatment in the future based on? Well, we know more, twenty thirty five, twenty forty, twenty fifty. I don't know. Um, and then the where. And we started with everything west of Indiana, two where the foothills go up on the west side of ninety three. North city limits to fifty second. Came up with thirty eight sites that met our size criteria and we're out of the floodplain. And we narrowed that down to two sites. Um, and we did public engagement on that um, two years ago. You don't need to watch that long video. It's a fabulous video, but um. All right. Uh, so the what? The next step in the what is what processes do we build? What are we actually going to build? So we did a pilot plant in twenty twenty four. Again, it's just a mini treatment plant. The big reason for doing this was the state of Colorado is very conservative on how you build your filters and they use. I don't know, fifty year old criteria of of the maximum rate. I was taught in school something called high rate filtration. So this is not new, guys. I've been in school a long time. Where you you can go much higher through your filters and the state says, yes, but you have to prove it to us with your water quality. So we did that. What that means is our filter boxes are going to be about half of what they would otherwise. So this mini treatment plant more than paid for itself. But the fun part was the challenge testing. I don't know if Danny would call it fun because it was when it got finicky. But the challenge testing allowed us to look at, will these filters work when we hit that fire and flood? And the answer is yes, that's the intent. What comes out of this is what's called a basis of design report. We should receive that this month. We're actually meeting with CDPHG next week. Um, where they accept the basis of design report and then we're free to go design. This is how you're going to do it. We agree. Go decide. Okay, how about the how? How are we going to do this really big project? Um, I have amazing staff. We have other things. Does anyone remember a sewer tour? Just asking. We have a lot of other projects, right? Um, so we spent twenty twenty four talking through how on the project and we landed on construction manager, general contractor, CMGC. We're not new to that as a city. Um, we do want to do it with an owner's advisor as shown in the figure there where the city will hold a contract with the designer, a contract with the owner's advisor and a contract with the contractor. Those dashed lines are there because their contracts say they have to work with each other. It's actually in their contract language. Um, the advantages of going this way are risk mitigation and risk assessment. Traditional design bid build path. Everyone says, oh, a hundred percent of the risk is on the contractor. Actually, it's on us because they don't do that for free. Let me tell you, they don't do that for free. This way, we can say this person controls it. This person controls it. That person is assigned to deal with it. Early cost knowledge. I have a contractor on board early. We'll have a contractor's estimate at thirty percent. That's going to help Chris out a lot to have early cost knowledge. Engineers are great, but things are not great at. I'll be the first to say that. Um, strictly packages. If we have a contractor on board, it means that we can procure equipment early that has very treatment equipment tends to have really long lead time. We could do that on our own, but we're taking on the liability of that supplier being on time. We're taking on the liability of warranty separate from the contractor. This way it stays all in one spot, one shot. It it's one spot. Usually a faster project delivery with that early contract, early packages. This was the one that really threw us over the edge. The contractors that have good reputations on the front range that do water plants don't do bid work anymore. They just don't. And then lastly, um, we should get a better quality project, product because uh, we they hired on their ability and experience. That said, it's not all roses. There's both sides to every decision and there are some challenges. A big one is cost, right? Are we getting a good cost? We can mitigate that with a third party estimate. We did that last summer on a CMGC contractor. Third party estimate was actually higher than the GMP we got. That felt great, actually. Um, this is a complex contract situation and a lot of relationships on a project this big. We can mitigate that with an owner's advisor, which is why we're showing that kind of arrangement. And then again, on that cost and finance is the open book. If we ask, the contractor has to show us their books and we're engineers, not accountants, but the owner's advisor can help us with that as well. So continuing on the how, um, the design contract and the OA contractor on tonight's agenda, consent agenda. And CMGC proposals came today, came today. Cool. So I get to start reviewing those. I'm excited. Um. So continuing on the how and the when, Chris is going to talk to us.
Thank you, Mary. So we've talked through a lot about this project and we're going to talk a little bit about project funding. I've got about five slides on that. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Mary for a final slide about timeline. So project cost estimates could change. We are early in this. We haven't even started design, so we know that things will change going forward. The cost estimates are the best estimate, the best information we have right now. It's based on the level of project detail that we have and they range from class five, as you heard earlier, which is a broad estimate down to class one, which is a final cost. Those become more specific as the design progresses. So you've heard of thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent design. That's when we get more information about the cost. Current cost estimate for this project is about three hundred and thirty million dollars and that is a class four estimate. We have some cost factors built in for uncertainty at this level and we will continue to review those as we move forward. So when we talked to council last summer about rates and fees for waters that were in stormwater, we talked about the need to issue debt this year for the water fund and for the sewer fund to fund projects over the next three years. And so for the water fund, we're looking to issue debts in an amount not to exceed about ninety million dollars. That's going to fund the design components of this project and some other large projects we have, notably the Gresh Reservoir project that we are participating in. So future project phases, notably construction, are going to require additional debt issuances of about three hundred million dollars. And that's the information we have right now. Again, we'll update that as we get more information. And a phased financing approach means we can adjust those amounts as needed. So right now we're looking at about a hundred and fifty million dollars in twenty twenty seven and another a hundred and fifty million dollars in twenty twenty nine to complete this project by twenty thirty. So main takeaways, these project costs could increase, but we're going to look at phase funding to allow us some flexibility with the debt amounts. So a lot of a lot of stuff on this slide. Again, council saw this graphic last summer when we went through the workshops with you. It is a map of the city. And it shows you our different projects in our capital program, our capital improvement program or our CIP that are color coded. So we have red for highly critical projects, orange for medium critical and yellow for low critical. You'll see down here, there's a circle with a bunch of red dots in it. That's actually Ralston plant work so that we can keep our workforce plant reliable. The Arvada plant is also a red dot over there between the reservoir and Tucker Lake, and that is a red dot. So it's a highly critical project to us. So again, based on direction from last fall, we have worked on debt issuances to cover the needs we have for our water and sewer funds. And we will continue to update these maps as we move forward in workshops. Again, very busy slide. Um, we presented this to city council last year again in the workshops. Council report, you weren't there for that. We can get you that information. This is, there's a lot going on. So there are six types of expenses that we have and they're shown in different colors. Um, existing debt service, proposed debt service, operations, and then the three types of capital projects that are red, orange and yellow. So you start at the bottom. It's existing debt service, operations, highly critical, medium and low critical. And then you start to see purple come in and that's new debt service. This is taking all of the expenses that are anticipated for each of the next ten years, allocating them to an annual typical single family water bill. So you can see what percent of a bill or what dollar amount of an annual bill is funding what types of expenses. So you can see for twenty twenty four, we were looking at about a six hundred and fifty dollar bill. A big chunk of that was going to red, which is highly critical CIP. Another big chunk was going to green, which is operations. You can see as we go out in years here that the red is very large. Twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty are the years that we are anticipating construction for this project. So that's a large chunk of funding. Now, years past twenty thirty, you'll see that the red is very tiny and that's based on the information we had as of last summer. Um, as a reminder, we go through budgeting every year. We will be revisiting the ten year CIP again. So we'll be looking at what projects we are recommending to be completed and funded for twenty twenty six through twenty thirty five. So again, I'm emphasizing that the project's costs were based on the best information we have at the time. We will continue to provide these charts as we go through the workshops for rates and fees discussions this year.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why after twenty thirty, the portion of the bill for operation goes from about two hundred and fifty dollars a month to about four hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars a month?
Because the red shrinks so much. So it's not that operations is increasing. It's that the amount of the bill that goes towards the red projects is decreasing.
Right, but why? I mean, it is increasing, like the green part goes from two fifty to like four fifty, five hundred. So what is the increased operations being spent on if not the red capital improvement projects?
It it's a percentage of the bill, not a dollar amount. So we're not saying that that much more money is going to operations, but of the overall amount of expenses.
It's a percentage.
It's going in percentage. So because we're seeing that this project is taking so much of the red, it's a highly critical project. And then starting in twenty thirty one, there's very little red because we don't have that many capital projects programmed in for twenty thirty through twenty thirty four yet, yet.
Yeah, I guess I'm just confused by the graph because I would expect operations to stay the same. And so like I just don't see why. Oh, I guess it's because the larger percentages being taken up by debt service. Okay.
And there's and there's less capital spending. So you can see how much, how small the capital spending is compared to operations. So we're not, we are not proposing to increase operations by an extreme amount. It's just that the percentage of the bill and the percentage of the expenses are different.
Well, I'm not following that. So your green goes from here to here. That implies that operation, we are spending on the per month bill, is spending more money on operations. That's what it's implying to me. So.
I know. That's why I think it's, I think that's the graph problem, not.
To me, if they if that stayed the same, I would see the graph going down.
And when I looked at it earlier, because I looked at it before I came in here, it was a percentage allocation. So I will, I will clear that up before the next time we we show this graph again.
Is that, yeah, twenty thirty one, we'd think it would start declining, like it should go down.
What what she's saying is in twenty thirty, the green part is like thirty percent or
Of your bill.
Of your total bill.
But your total bill still.
But your total bill is still going up.
But the graph is a dollar, not a percent.
Right.
The it makes sense to me because operations are going to start costing more. You're going to be giving people raises.
Yeah, but you did do that for other years. Right.
Well, because we're building.
So I'm hearing that there is some confusion about this chart and I am not intending that. So I will make sure that the next time we show this information, it is easier to understand.
And there should be efficiency in operations. If I think of operations, there should be efficiencies in the operations and the cost should go down on a new plan. Even if you have FTEs, the the constant maintenance and operations of it should.
Yes, yes.
So that's why this graph messes us up, I think.
Okay.
Well, the chemicals, are those included in operations?
Yes.
Those chemicals are going to be expensive. The larger the plant, the more you're going to be spending on counts.
But only technically, well, but only technically only about another two, what was it, two million gallons or whatever a day increase.
But we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
We did promise five o'clock to Linda.
I I do think it is important to emphasize the overall projection of rate increases into the future if we were to fully fund the ten year. So we can find a better rate to stay on the context of an annual typical single family bill that is less confusing. Um, but that was an important factor that we wanted to make sure everybody was thinking about is that to build this type of legacy project, you can see the subsequent double digit re-increases that are forecast to be required based off of those debt issuances. And that's why we wanted to have that conversation with you today.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah, just a goal to keep in mind is I would assume that this is not, this is doubling in six years, seven years, doubling water bill. Um, that's pretty impactful. And if the debt has been paid for. I'm assuming that's what the red, I can't read with.
No, the purple is dead.
Purple is dead.
How long's the debt if we issued it? How long's the debt?
Thirty years.
Years.
So we issued debt in twenty twenty two for the water and sewer fund. Those were thirty year issues. We're proposing additional three years worth of debt. So we would have four years worth of existing debt by the end of this project.
Yeah, it would make sense to me if the green was put more to debt than it was to operations, but.
We'll figure out it differently.
Yeah, we'll figure out how to explain that better.
Let's do it on a spaghetti diet.
So again, um, busy slide. The graphic here represents that one pager that we provide to you during the budget process. It's, I'm not intending for you to have to read numbers or projects. This shows you what our ten year water fund CIP looks like. You can see the red projects, the orange projects and the yellow projects. And we use that for all of our our conversations with you as far as rates and fees go. So we are looking at a number of options for this early part of the project. And we're also looking for financing options that provide both stable funding in a timely manner. Um, Mary and Bethany talked about long lead time for materials for this project. And so that's something that's figuring in heavily to how we move forward. So we are proposing revenue bonds for this first phase. Um, the other options out there are many. Um, the most commonly used are federal funds and state funds, which are mostly federal funds and those have some constraints that go along with them. We are looking at those for future components to see if they make sense for us. Um, but right now revenue bonds are our proposal. We are also looking at the ten year plan. So we're looking at all of these projects to see what projects were possible. We can push out to reduce the need for debt. So yes, we have some red projects. We would prefer to keep those on the list. But for orange and yellow, can we shift any of those out a few years, not get rid of them, but to shift them so that we can reduce the amount of debt we're looking for, which in turn reduces the impacts of that debt on our customers' bills.
If we push those orange and yellow projects out, can you tell us when they turn red? Because that is my fear is we do do that deferred stuff and then all of a sudden.
Um, we can look at that definitely.
That concerns me.
Talked most about is deferring pipeline replacement. And it means more water breaks.
Exactly right. That was something I have to talk to Don about.
So there are trade offs.
Yeah, but there's others in there. And and yes, we can add that information of when do we think we're on a red project.
Side note, when you get to that spreadsheet, can you can you put ones that have been accomplished, like in green or something? Because we.
Oh, we just pull them off. But yes, we can do.
We constantly did these, oh, everything's failing, yeah.
Accomplish anything and it doesn't feel very.
Just know what you've done all day for.
Yeah, can you just put them to green and what year they were completed?
Do that.
Yeah, what year they were proposed and what year they were completed.
Yep. So future funding work, um, Mary mentioned that on tonight's agenda, there are two contracts for your consideration, the engineering design and the owner's advisor contract. Uh, we will come back to you sometime this spring for a revenue bond authorization and also a reimbursement resolution request so we can pay ourselves back for costs we've already incurred for this project. We will also again continue to review and refine our ten-year CIP. And then we will issue debt in early summer for the water fund and the sewer fund. And as I mentioned, we'll come back to you again like we did last year with four workshops to talk about water, sewer and stormwater rates and fees and then request direction from you for which scenarios you'd like to see us bring back to you. And then a continued conversation with you about the out-year needs for this project and others. I think at this point, are there any more questions? I'll turn it back to Mary.
Right, it's the when, right? Um, so just to orient you, uh, the X-axis is time, starting, uh, we started in January, but that first arrow was essentially today. And out to January of twenty thirty, which is our estimated rough first quarter twenty thirty completion of the replacement capacity work. The bottom, all those blues, those are all contracts. And I meet most, if not all of those contracts are need to, are going to need to come to council for their size for approval. The other thing that's important about that uh contract piece is our contracts are written that we can't change our mind at any point. We just have to reimburse however much money we've spent today. On the top, that green, that's the finance piece. Those are the three bond issuances that Chris has talked about. Those we can't change, we can't, you know, a year after we issued the bonds go, oh, I'm sorry, never mind. Thanks though. But those are a little bit uh more permanent decisions, so to speak. And then in gray, we've got, um, we expect to have a decision around land, um, mid-third quarter, end of third quarter. And then, as I said, project completion, um, in first quarter of twenty thirty. So this just gives you a sense of the when for the different pieces and parts. That line is showing how we're spending money. It's not how we're contracting money, it's how we're spending the money. Because otherwise the line would take a big jump with everyone's blue boxes. But we felt that was more honest because as I said, our contracts are written that um we can't choose to stop them. That is our last slide. We need to put it on decision or question, discussion, unless you really want with discussion. Um, and I think we have about six minutes, Linda.
It's like it. I guess just where is groundbreaking?
Um, so this first GMP will be primarily uh equipment, but I would expect an early package somewhere here, wouldn't you say? Bethany, like dirtwork.
We're looking at summer twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Cool.
And again, that's an advantage of this CMGC approach is um if we know rough grading of the site, we can get out there and do it as we finish up design of the buildings.
So if we approve this bond, but then future councils don't approve the next bonds.
Work would stop.
Work stops. So we have a half or third way bill facility. So.
Or they figure out how to fund it differently.
Or we figure out how to fund it differently, like we go with uh some of the federal money that Chris talked about. There's a lot of strings with federal money. Right now, it doesn't look super stable.
So why issue three bonds?
Because we can't go back on it and we're not, we're at a class four estimate. And um, well, Chris is right, the number could absolutely go up. We have put some contingency in and the number might actually come in a little lower. But we would be stuck with that three hundred and thirty, plus I'm kind of speaking for Chris here. We're paying interest on that money if we issue it day one, um, even if we're not using it in day one.
And I'll add on to that, one of the other constraints is with revenue bonds, you have to spend eighty-five percent of the mine within the years. So we couldn't issue all the debt upfront to pay for the entire project. We also I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing you any kind of rate and fee scenario to fund three hundred and thirty million dollars upfront. That would be extraordinarily high. So this not only spreads the costs across the, the project year, but also does them in a way that is, while double digits are not attractive, um, it's the lowest possible rate we could come up with to fund that amount of need across the years.
And we've already approved the rates that need to increase.
Twenty twenty five for the.
Just to be true each year.
Yeah, right.
I just wanna add the eighty-five percent is for your taxability limit. So if you want these to be tax-exempt bonds, you have to meet that criteria. If you want these to be taxable bonds, you don't have to meet that criteria. However, our rate will be significantly higher. So the taxpayers will have to pay more, but we could get the money today if you want that. But we sort of don't make that decision.
So um, oh, maybe a couple of comments and then, and then a question. So you know, this is about, gonna end up being about a third of our capacity, give or take, maybe a little more than a third uh of our treatment capacity. And you know, the idea, I guess, is uh, you know, we've got redundancy with two, we've got the ability to meet the peak demand. Um, we already, the council already decided on the citing of it, even though I disagreed with that, that, that's already been decided and that's already in the work. So, so that's, that's coming. The question I have is is it, is it prudent to look maybe even a little further ahead at you know, what's next after this plant? What happens to the two-thirds capacity and would it be better for, for this plant to be built as, or at least at least be converted into the two-thirds capacity? So that when the current two-thirds capacity plant is similarly unable to be used anymore, whether that's changing regulations or, or whatever, that, that then there are better or more options for that. And what would be the, the, the cost associated with that?
Fantastic question. And we have looked at it a lot of ways. To do any of what you said on those options would mean cracking open our nineteen sixty-five contract with Denver Water. And we they've made some noise back. And right now we are their only contract holder that has an unachievable supply.
Why, why would that mean crack an open, open?
Because the contract says we can only do thirty-six MGD at the Ralston site and it can only be delivered through the Ralston site. Why it was written that way in nineteen sixty-five? But it's very.
Okay, but I, I guess, I guess. So, so you're saying we can't build thirty-six million gallons per day capacity somewhere else?
We can, we just cannot deliver three quarters of our water to it.
Right.
Well, hopefully, but can you divert it? You can deliver it to Ralston.
And we're continuing to explore it with our attorneys, but.
Water attorney for this.
We've been looking at um a lot of the Denver Water contracts, the nineteen sixty-five. And we're also working with um our water council specifically on these issues. The nineteen sixty-five contracts is that the water needs to be processed through the Ralston Water Treatment Plant. So we've kind of been trying to explore and look at like what does processed.
Put a pump in there and pump it to the next.
So these are all, these are all things that.
How much is process?
Yeah, it's all about.
I guess that's not really the question I asked, though. You know, that's details about, you know, which we're, we're gonna do. I guess the what I'm trying to talk about is, you know, here, the Ralston Water Treatment Plant was, it's sixty years old or seventy years old and we've updated it, but, but you know, over the last four years, we've been on a tour out there and we've been shown the cracks in the foundation and the stairway that's too steep and the you know, the, eh, that you guys do an, an amazing job of pointing out, pointing out the deficiencies. I think everybody's scared to death, you know, af- after this presentation, but the, the, I'm talking about more from a strategic standpoint. So you build this eighteen million gallon per day capacity and then ten years later, you're in the position of saying, well, our thirty-two billion gallon per day now is obsolete at the end of its life and we're in the same pickle again.
Expandable?
Yes, the intention is that it, it, the new, the replacement capacity be expandable to twenty-seven, which would meet our build-out estimates. Um, and Jacqueline, if you wanna address, we have talked about that, uh, the Ralston plant, uh, twenty forty-five-ish, but.
I was just gonna hot on, some of this, um, the team is already examining even as early as the siding study, what options are there for the Ralston plant? We are turning it strategically about twenty forty-five and beyond. And there are some options on that site to keep your front slug in operation while we rebuild and have space to rebuild portions of it. So we can take more of a phased approach as we replace the Ralston facility and do that later. And the team is already starting.
Yes, and part of that discussion is around trying to get every last drop out of the work done in two thousand. Brad mentioned and I mentioned that um fairly significant upgrades were built in two thousand. We can replace filters and leave all of that in place and then in twenty years look at replacing it. So the Ralston plant's easier to phase replacement pieces. So absolutely, we're, we're trying to take a holistic picture and leave the future us in a much better place.
Last, last thing, I just wanna point out that, you know, given that chart, regardless of how it's revised, I think that the salient point here is, is in a very short amount of time, seven years or so, water portion on people's utility bill is gonna double if, with this plan. I think without a doubt, the wastewater portion is gonna double. The solid waste portion is absolutely gonna double, if not more. And you know, people who have, you know, my house, I have a hundred and twenty-dollar winter time utility bill is gonna be a two hundred and fifty-dollar winter time utility bill. And for those who have three or four hundred dollar summertime utility bills for water in the yard, that utility bill may be, you know, not gonna be double because it's not all, you know, it's not all gonna be water, but that utility bill is gonna be five and six hundred dollars, four and five, six hundred dollars. As, as we go through this, I wouldn't lose track of that for us, that we don't have to do this, this way. We absolutely have to manage our, our, our system, but we should be balancing that against the ability of people to pay their, pay their water bills. And I know every, you know, we talk about rates, we have charts that show that we're in the middle somewhere and I would imagine water treatment's not getting any cheaper for anybody else either, so we probably stay in that. But you wanna talk about why inflation is there and persistent and a big factor and becoming a bigger factor in everybody's lives every year, this, this contributes to it. This is part of it. And I, I just want, you know, the council realize that our actions have consequences too. And this could be one of them. And as we think about this, to think about that in those terms, what's best for that end user who turns on the tap on one hand, but also pays the bill on the other?
Well, I think we'll pay it forward either way. We're either gonna have to have ridiculous water restrictions because we can't make enough safe water. Or we're gonna have a catastrophic failure of our plant because it can't meet, we're pushing water through it too fast and we'll have a catastrophic, catastrophic failure or violation. So we pay the piper now or we pay the piper then, when the money's too much. Um, I think that uh but you know, you're talking to an infrastructure girl. So when I see that we have an opportunity to provide safe water, safe drinking water to everyone at what we right now are paying for reasonable costs, I look at what people are paying in other cities. We're real reasonable and I, I'm, I look at Lakewood and share with my girlfriend who lives on a smaller plot than I do and her water bill is astronomical. I think that we are completely in line with where the entire uh the, our entire Dr. Cog region is going. And so just, just looking at that, I think that uh the team has done a really good job well vetting it. We're not gonna be out of line. If we do nothing, then that's a big bill. This is a smaller bill over time.
Yeah, I, I think my point is the same thing. That we can wring our hands over, it'll be doubling in seven years. True, but what, what's the alternative? And I'm not sure we have an, an alternative. I have a couple of questions on the graphs. One is what kind of a contingency do you have built in? Given that we're at a phase four projection now and later we'll add it, be a phase two.
Yeah, so we're carrying a thirty percent budget factor on top of the cost that our design engineer provided to us for the treatment plant. This total three hundred and thirty million includes, includes costs for the ancillary infrastructure to both get water to the, to this replacement facility and then to our distribution network. And so that is using historic costs that we've paid in the city and then um bringing that in twenty twenty-four dollars. Cause I, I did this in twenty twenty-four, this cost. Um, and then adding contingency for size and increased cost because we, it's it, in general, inflation is, is more than we are anticipating for the most part.
So you're looking at a thirty percent.
I did want to emphasize this is a program cost. It's not just the treatment plant.
So this is, this is.
Make everything work.
And money is going to continue to get more expensive. So we are a little bit over time. Are there any closing questions or thoughts that are burning?
We are happy to take any questions that you have later.
So we're, we're down to one site or we're still at two?
We are at one. We're calling it a land decision.
Okay.
And uh, we're.
Cause we had a conversation as council about that.
Great job, Tina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Kristen, I'll let you do whatever.